Okay, so if we can convene the public session of the Better attempts. I think we start out with the approval of the minutes from the prior two meetings. One regular and one special. Has everyone had a chance to review those and give any comments if necessary? Can I get a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of May 25th and the June 16th?
Move.
Second. Any discussion, questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I really don't have very much on my report. We're not doing, we don't have any presentations tonight because I know Dan is going to be talking a bit about the draft budget, so we thought we'd save time for that tonight. So let me congratulate Pam Simpson and the cast of Into the Woods for their production over the weekend. I understand it was very well done. Fun was had by all. Is that right? So congratulations to them. We're currently working, as I mentioned, towards our budget for next year, getting updates on enrollments and things like that. As the months go into spring, we'll have better updates and more information moving forward. Right now, things are working well. Things are moving along. That's about it.
Good. I know that significant numbers of the folks have been sick, including the superintendent. Are members coming back up in the elementary school and elsewhere? Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. The calendar?
So the board has a first review of the calendar for next year. It did require us to include a side letter with the BTA because there are components within the calendar that are outside the contract. We had to ask them for their agreement, which they have agreed to. So to just point out a few highlights of the calendar, you'll notice that, I don't know when last time this happened or if it did happen, we're starting with the teachers prior to Labor Day. Contract allows us to have one day with teachers prior to Labor Day. We asked them for two, which they have agreed to. Students will start the first day of classes the day after Labor Day, so on September 8th. As you go through, the other component that we asked the teachers for is to come in for a half a day on Veterans Day, which is a Wednesday of next, Wednesday, the 11th next year. Normally, teachers do not work on Veterans Day and schools close. School is closed for students, but we're having teachers come in for a half a day Conference Day. The rest of the calendar is normal, but you'll see in December, it seems that everyone enjoyed having the two-week break this current year. This is probably next year's the last time we'll have that opportunity to do that again for a while. So because of the agreements that we received from the Teachers Association, we were able to have schools closed for two full weeks between the December 18th would be the last day of classes and through the new year, coming back on January 4th. So that's one of the benefits of the calendar next year. Then you also notice in March, on the 10th, there's a half-day Conference Day. Now, students will be in session for the morning session on that day, and teachers will be involved in conferences. Freshman development work in the afternoon. That's why that one is shaded that way. The last day of school because of Regent's Rating Day is the 25th of June, and then teachers will have their last PD day on the following Monday, the 28th. So those are the, pretty much the highlights of the calendar for next year.
Is there anything that you would see changing between now and the 6th?
I don't. You know, the state determines the last day of school, so that's the only thing. If they change that for some reason, we'd have to readjust, but that's the only thing I can think of that would affect this. So any questions on the review of the calendar?
Do we have to pass it now or just do a review?
Next one. You want to pass it?
We'll do it, we'll review it again in March and then we can...
And have the approval in March, just in case something else comes up. So this is just for a first review. If there's any comments or questions about it.
When do we get visibility on next year's, you know, end-of-season athletic activities?
Well, usually, it doesn't come out until beginning into the fall generally, so we have to kind of use this year as a guide, so we don't run into that whole graduation date conflict again. But I think if we pick the 19th of June the following year, 2021, we should be, we should be fairly safe with that. And I just want to point out, in terms of this year's calendar, as we mentioned before, part of the provision in the BTA contract, we don't use all our emergency closing days. We do a give-back day, and right now, not a couple of weeks, we haven't had to close because of that white stuff. And if that continues and we don't use all our days, I kind of recommend to the board, probably, I guess it'll have to be in the March meeting, I think, that we take the Monday after Easter off as the give-back day for this school calendar.
Okay.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. I have a few resolutions before you this evening. The first one is a resolution to accept Karen Peterson's resignation effective August 31st of this year. Karen's been with us for 22 years. We will have plenty of time to celebrate her between now and August 31st, but I do want to publicly state how grateful we are for her being such an integral part of our leadership team over these 22 years. In addition to that, you have resolutions regarding a new teaching assistant, some overages due to the departure of our computer science teacher, as well as some substitute teacher aides and substitute teacher aid appointments, as well as substitute teacher aid appointments, as well as a new substitute nurse. In addition, you have K, which is the resolution to accept the side letter that we discussed in executive session as it relates to the calendar changes with the BTA. We have a resignation of the school nurse, yes, the one we had just hired at St. Joe's. So we are in the process of interviewing for that position now, and we're covering that both internally and with substitute nurses. We have before you a spring coaching roster before the spring season began, and you'll see two specific coaching resolutions, given that they're new to our district. So I ask you to consider resolutions A through P, please.
Thank you. I get a motion to approve resolutions A through P.
Move.
Hang on a second.
Sorry.
So before we go, I'd just like to say a couple things about Karen and her resignation. So on behalf of the school board and the entire school community, I'd like to express our heartfelt thanks to Karen for her years of service, including tonight. I haven't forgotten, or she won't be here to hear this. Karen joined us 22 years ago and has been a full-time athletic director for the last 18. In her time at Bronxville, she has led key initiatives within the school. Among other things, she has provided strong leadership for all of our athletic programs, led professional development for efforts for the athletic staff, led the development and implementation of key policies and guidelines, worked with the Athletic Council, a group of staff, parents, and students to organize such important events as homecoming, the Bronco Bonanza, and other various events, and worked together with the school administration on several key facilities-related projects, including both the fields and the gym spaces. Karen has also represented Bronxville externally in Westchester, most recently as the president of the NYSPHSAA Section 1 in 2018-19. So please join me in expressing our appreciation for Karen and her hard work and wishing her well and her next year. Any other comments or discussion?
Yes.
We are going to have further opportunities to celebrate Karen in her 22 years, right?
Yes.
I believe so.
Indeed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions or... All of those motions passed.
Thank you.
We sat here a couple of weeks ago and went over where the budget was at, and there's been a couple of changes since then. One largely positive change, and I'm just going to let everybody know where we are at this point. Are we doing the present, oh, we're doing last year's? You were doing current year. I got you. We're showing a surplus of about $700,000, which more than covers what you'll hear in a little while. $500,000 commitment to offset the tax levy for next year. That was adjusted upward for state aid figures for the current year. About $200,000 in excess of what was budgeted. So things are looking good for the current year.
That's good.
We'll take it.
Dan, the new fund that we're, fund that we created for the retirement system?
Sure.
If we ended up at 703, can we take $203,000 and put that in that fund at the end of the year?
You can take whatever you want and put it into that fund. Putting it in, up to a million dollars, is easy. Getting it out is the tough part. You'd need a referendum to get, get it out of there.
Referendum?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm thinking about the capital.
No, no, this is the capital.
Sure, sure. TRS, the TRS was, not an issue.
Do you, I, you know, I know it's, as you think through it, is that a prudent use of the overhead, of the $500,000?
Yeah, I think the Finance Committee will get together, as we do every year in June, and look at the more updated projections, look at our fund balances and our reserves, you know, particularly the teachers' retirement system reserves as well, and come up with a plan with how to allocate all the reserves.
You had, you had mentioned at some point about rebalance, looking at all of the reserves and whether they're at the right levels and adjusting back and forth.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
But we want to keep 4% or less in our undesignated fund balance because otherwise the controller comes and slaps us around a little bit.
But the assessment we had here two weeks ago included some of that reserve adjustment adjustment.
Sure. Yeah. Yep. Got a little ahead of myself. Now, talking about the budget for next year that we were working on about two weeks ago. We're towards the end. Board's reviewing, we're refining. You know, we'll take any kind of input from the public between now and a public hearing in early May and, you know, take that in consideration of the budget we put forth for adoption at either the March or April, April meeting. Go to the next slide. Want to review the tax levy cap calculation. There's been a slight change in that when I went to file our calculation with the controller's office, they pre-populate our state aid figure. That's the large figure on the first yellow highlighted, highlighted line all the way to the right, which was a little different than the executive budget number, which I had included in the first round. So that's not much of a change, but it's a little bit of a change. And that serves to adjust our official cap to about three, a little over 3%, 0.05. I think it was a 0.02% change or something from what we saw a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, the way it works is those two yellow lines adjust our cap for debt service and capital expenditures. They take them out of the calculation for the cap on the front end and put them back in on the back end. And the reason our cap went about 1% higher is because our C-Wing project has finally paid off, so roughly $400,000 in state aid from that project is coming off the books before the state aid for the new project comes back, comes onto the books. So we have a temporary swing of negative state aid, which is reflected in this revised budget. And you'll see later that, you know, we're not pushing a 3% budget to stay under the cap. We're keeping to our commitment to make sure this project does not negatively impact the tax levy from, from where we were a couple of years ago when we first committed to doing this project. Next slide. The changes in this budget from what we saw a couple of weeks ago, we finally got a final teacher retirement system rate of 9.53%. The original budget had the top of the projected range, which was 10 and 1/4%. That equates to about $166,000 reduction in the budget. And then I also had to adjust revenue for projected building aid that was a reduction and increase our, actually serves to increase the tax levy by reducing our projected state aid as a credit to the, to the overall revenue budget by $20,000. So this is, shows about a net reduction of $146,000. What's next? State aid could change a little bit. Usually doesn't change that much, but if it does change, it's usually positive from this point on, and we'll look to adopt it either the March or April meeting. And this is where we are. Without appropriating fund balance with our proposed budget number two where it is now, our tax levy we've changed would be just a hair under 2%. As we've seen before, our cap is, I didn't update that, but it's about 305, not 309. But our, we are offsetting the tax levy by $500,000, which I discussed a little earlier. So our estimated tax levy at this point is about $43.8,000, which represents an increase of 0.88%. And calculated tax levy, our cap is 3.5, 3.05. Little typo there. So our budget is under the cap by $941,000 roughly. Next slide, please. We also have information to estimate our tax rate. The assessment roll came in at $3,125 million roughly, which is actually, actually reductions in the assessment rolls of about 1.52%. So that impacts a change in our estimated tax rate of about 2.44% from where we were in the prior year. Basically, simple, or close to simple addition. There's a few other factors in there, but if you take the, the reduction in assessed value and the increase in the levy, you get pretty close to what our estimated tax rate change is.
But just to be clear, if someone got a bill for $100 last year, what you're saying is their bill, all out, they don't go up by 0.88%?
Yeah.
This, what you just walked through is sort of...
It's based on the tax rate.
It depends what happened to their own individual assessment.
Not all out.
Yeah. Center is parabola.
All things go up and down at the same level, the tax rate increased from the school district to 0.88%.
Correct. Yeah. And a 1% tax levy change is about $140 per $1 million assessed value. And I want to, I want to go over a history of where our tax rate's been over the last few years. This is about a 10-year history of where our rate was. It's been as high as close to 14.3% in 2014-15 and as low as about 13.3. So we're kind of right in the middle, or middle of that range. So, you know, I don't think people are going to be seeing tax bills radically different from what they've seen prior. And that's all I have tonight.
So now you're going to go through it in more detail probably the next meeting, but just a gross dollar mark. What is the budget going up? It's like $400,000, right? Because I just took, I was just trying to figure it out. If I look at the...
Expenditures or tax levy?
No, just, just operate the school. Sure, think about it from that terms.
The second sheet that you have, which is the detailed budget, go to the last page of that. You'll see at the bottom where you see grand totals, actually, it's up towards the top of the page. We have 2019-20 budget and 2020-21 proposed budget. So roughly, it's like about 600,000, five, 600,000.
You're talking about 49,506 versus 50,000?
Yes. And then we've had revenue increases slightly. Is that, that 500,000 is maybe 1.2% on the tax levy, but we've had revenue increases over the prior year, which offset that down to about 0.88 on the tax levy.
Any other questions for Dan on that? Okay. Dan, I think you're, there are no financial action items?
Yeah. We'll go, move it on to, no financial action items this evening. So we go over to facilities. We opened a couple of bids this past week on the 4th of February, and I think we got some good news and some not-so-good news that we're going to try and work with. I think on the Innovation Center, we've got some bids that we think we can work with. The low bid was about $538,000, but there is another bid pretty close to that, which is very close to where our expectations for that project are at this point. And I'm not sure we're going to stick with the low bid. We're currently vetting those, but I think the, the second low bidder is probably okay for that project, so it's, I think we'll be able to move forward with that and probably have an award at the next board meeting, if not, a special meeting between now and the next meeting to get started. But the larger project, the curtain wall with a bunch of other smaller ones thrown in, we had a low bid of about 1.7 million and then another bid at about 2.7 million, so it was about a million-dollar difference. And the low bidder backed out, saying there was a tabulation error, which they're allowed to do by law. And so we have one bid left, and that's with our current contractor, so we're currently negotiating with them to get that number down. It's, it's close to, it's under the budget, but it's very close when you consider contingency and soft costs to where the budget is. We'd like a little more room to operate.
They know what the budget is?
Uh, yeah, probably.
Okay. There's your number.
Yeah.
I got to take a read on that budget.
Yep. But I think the good news is that we feel we can work with both of these numbers eventually and get the work done. The bad news is it doesn't provide us with an awful lot of wiggle room.
What about timing? Does it allow us to do what we want to do in the timeframe we want to do?
I believe so. You know, we're going to talk about trying to get Niram the month of, of June, a good portion of it, to start on the curtain wall specifically. We talked about that a couple of weeks ago. I think the board asked us what scares us the most, and that, that's it. That curtain wall project over the summer, because we have, we have basically two months to tear down that whole wall and put it back up. So if we could increase that by, that amount of time, by 40 or 50%, that would be helpful. So...
How would that work?
Well, you know, a lot of the high school is vacant as, as we do testing and that kind of stuff over the month of June, so we might be able to relocate some elementary classrooms there for early.
Yeah, I spoke with Ann Meyer about that this morning. I think the beginning of June is a bit unrealistic in that perhaps by the middle of June, we talked about the having the ability to move some attricious classrooms into high school rooms so we can get them started even by the 15th of June. Then we do have an extra week in September before the kids get here. And we don't, they don't start until September, what is it, 7th or 8th, whatever it is, so that...
Even a week or two.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any, any time we can buy, we're going to take, yeah.
Turn off the air-conditioned rooms in the high school?
If you want the tests.
We talked about that.
Okay.
We'll see.
If they stay in those rooms, they'll have rooms with very nice views however.
Be no dog.
Good airflow.
Good air.
There's an action item, I guess?
Yeah, we have a change order from the, the plumbing contractor, no, or the mechanical contractor on relocating a... Let's see.
This was a...
Oh, it's removal, removal and reconnecting a loop along wall space on the northern side of the building towards Meadow Avenue for basically discovered conditions for close to $7,000. It's the first change order. I circulated it to the Facilities Committee, and there were no issues with the change order of this magnitude for, to keep us from freezing during the month of January, if I'm not wrong.
Can I get a motion to approve the proposed resolution of writing the change order?
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Athletic merger resolutions.
Yeah, we do mergers each year for, that allow our students to participate in sports that we may not have the numbers for. We participate with Mount Vernon in girls volleyball, boys and girls skiing with New Rochelle, let's see, boys swimming and diving with New Rochelle, ice hockey with Tuckahoe and Eastchester, and Edgemont this year. And let's see, what was the last one?
We got all swim and dive.
Oh, softball, yeah. With Tuckahoe, I believe, right? Yeah. Tuckahoe. So, you know, we can't, we don't have the numbers to put these, these programs up ourselves, so we merge with other districts. It's a great opportunity for our kids.
Can you remind us how the costs are shared or is it just...
Usually per shared on a per head basis on who participates.
And we're pretty happy how these are going?
Yeah.
And these are all consistent with merge programs from prior years?
Yes.
Any changes?
Not to my knowledge. Edgemont might be new for, as a participant in hockey, but everything else looks pretty much a status quo.
And where it says host programs of Bronxville, Vanu Rochelle, whoever, does the host?
We administer the program. We pick, we pick the coach, pay the coach, all that, and then take in revenue. And it's usually the, usually the senior AV picks that up, so maybe we can get rid of one, get rid of hockey and make it somebody else's problem, but we'll see.
Okay. Any more questions? Can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any community reports? We have a meeting, I know that they scheduled for March 7th, a grand workshop, which we'll come back on when that's needed, right?
If it's needed, yeah. Right now, we probably won't be needing that, but it's potentially there.
Yeah. And then we have a meeting on Thursday, March 19th, for the budget among of the things.
For the finance, John, it was an official meeting, but we've talked about how to issue the $3 million that got approved in December, and we're leaning towards doing 10 years versus 15 years.
Yeah.
Because the interest rate is so beneficial, even doing it 10 years and advertising it off, you're still under the cap, you know, this whole cap. And the thought is that, you know, future boards will have more flexibility if we have debt coming due in 10 years versus 15.
Yep.
Yeah, that'll match the field stuff.
Exactly. That's what Dan was saying. And we should close on that and get those bonds issued late February, early March.
Any public discussion, comments? Great. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.